Namah Prensou Pilsa Kona Ikonteli ami, is whereabouts we talk about ama performing artist? Minamwe performing artisti amen ex. So sibane kiri ngana, angani madendu noka fane wibendu ezo amenwa ili kui 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 bilu Niyama performing artist. If only as the script on television, chappusano or whatsoever, sisuwe sipali in English, then when there is an ex that we have to translate it into Zulu. So now you're doing two jobs at the same time. What is the competition for that person or for that artisti? It says in 702, yes, cut a sword. If that's not been amended, pre-copyrighted, it has to be there and the best year across wonke ama contracts abo banka banku abama exercise or exercises across South Africa wonke nyabong.
Basai sibonelusi sherusti, number four.
Sambona ni nonke in Palatine. Niyabo nga kuli mitu bengi todi di na mugu tinguazoo zoe da in Palatino ngabi tingu. And we moved on to sanda, I could ending, couldn't go down driver. So neka madoklada, neka madangampada wukoda, ne doklada wumata nonu. Eh, eh, wa ama artiste spongo, ndiri tsubenjani ili bekati ngangidfisi, sangdoka ngalitodi. Niyate du guzi, ndio basitfiri de, ndalela sali lu ngasajula na giri sisa ra de nam, nyabong. Sali performa nganani. Nganani je. Kilitu mita nyoni.
Jitasa, bulungile kana ntezor, niyama te tu kondezandla, no masenda, inji kiri iskatisi. Itali number five.
Mano. Mano. Eh, ambri ngalele, matiigo, mbingali tulu samis donke, wuxiwa sibane wa seng. Eh, na ma iskatisi kizetunani ngabimanti. Ikamalame ngombo zonba, eh, ntsiwa olunu. Eh, nikabang du tui basoliso. Eh, ikosunese, ikutu ngalela wakulula wutu, umte kuaa fisi South Africa, awusbu zanga matiigo. Dangea ni na, ni fetu, ola wakilu malapana o o oala etu, okumi da ba wutu. Oma abahu libese guleu tshik, abapene tsumtepe labantu, abaglu tshik. So, ikosunese, agatresi yema zili, eh, eh, profiti ngani. Upre, eh, sotrela inma presen. Inma presen eserutu, aswaza onksa benza, manisuskat. Angola wutu la etu mbemba na wazulend, ukona oye to, owa itora loman. Kotaya apu. So, ikosunese wutige, sile wutu opu women, actioni kushena mati. Wokwa fikona siya matiigo, sibedi singo tafleni, kunemde, etu la, go, tula beju, mbeze kshadi, mbeze efet, etu, mbeze de, mbeze beju de kona etika etu. So, ikosunese wutige, opu women, adnaksitela wutu, inka fisi South Africa, awusbu ina kana banu, abae ekis South Africa. Siya tali wutu, basonepe, bakumre wutu, ona ta banu sijapu. Kuna abinani wuju wutu, sibalestite shtude, ndingala oku, bu bu, lele ma. So, ikosunese wutu, umanga be, abahun, be agule undi au, for example, like, asulend. Abatintepela, omaspa la, dema sosi na banu, kundaba sida gona, bezo bezo na ma asisi gonda, oba, utale wutu minister, nomes kulesis, saba tui, unu mutu la, akinja, owa zwa. I event, ina event, unu mutu wutu owa zwa wutu, klo post, yakala kama tui samban. What about ama upcoming artist? Madoka velanina banu, abanani, abakula, music wise, umabe kusebenza, mtoye to, i event de event, kala kwele mtoye. Yes, sibavu, mukuti, uyka, da go tu aga, no onman, ukula niili. Siya tali wutu, gume inki la na, oda wutu, sibasi, sisi writing up, but we're writing up. Agadu kula banu manje, obuzalento, inga ke, ukubegia kambi, nyabong.
Nyatalu wutu wutu ena, siya rekota. Oma sepe sheni pozula, omo funuglesho, axilo ni tsaas wutu wu akavat, because we are recording. Gomase so she said she was, awusneleli, going forward, get island before it. Itali number six.
Sambona ani. Nisha ngenje, eh, omphamde, ujansha, ngamalakwane, gesuka, eh, right, abapense, nulat, tentu tsu. Eh, namila besekshilo, ane ring sanga lakuli, kota, mina insa puchini, ebengina, ekuzu ilili, enzo infu mutsi, sanga kumplena ngamanyi, ama tobi sakoona. But ama event organizer, anu vala utso ama tremota zmasbinali, baba bena, benza, inzo zo, ama tavo etu, tue etu uzoe performa ngu etu, event in, kandilisim sambika lango twa, etu uzoe performa ngu etu, genaro tande, usha u tsu, twa, alpetenu banu, debu sese wa firi, wena venu, uzoe du perform, only sifanu, wutu, umasashe, shales, iskatsak, sugu perform, tumtengi supeli, lesa sibona lomstal. Kota, wena jeni atis tu firi le, wa pedikese sika tsako, eh, wa keza, wah wah wah, wa kubili transport, wa wah wah kubili transporti, pasu bu eleka luma petu man. So, nyatalu wutu wu protection bill, amendment bill, le, eh, nsa rala, wutu, le, ndabama event organizers, sache la ni pre, wutu, alinabi event organizer, ebanku, wu, 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 abantu beze, wu, wu, abaze le, wu, event organize. So, pasu wutu, event organizer, eh, avukutu tsefik palapans, nesu melana ngapo, weni duna usturi post, ah, ganja, ngoba reku kumeli, nam, business, no senden, usu buze, tu ai uso uba, nuzo buze, shuti, ya rifera na ngama artisti, wutu, sengi mexploitele mina, ah, mexploti na, ah, mukuti, mshuzu, wu me la, eh. So, finale, kinga la, ezu ulendu wutu, maguni mtenbe mku, eh, stations, izbuwa, globangi izbuwa, je, 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 pasu wini, na, nutande, industry sugu, namu, gidele saski, pasu wutu agi ku, eh, masu, eh, nzo tali wutu, bafunaminta, lo, popo, mara, zogutu, anele, eh, debu uba, ekuze lesbi, eh, ebengi fisi gudzulisa, eh, wu, wu, bakshenisho, le, le, ma tshu saktan loads, eh, wu, music, kiba, usu wusu, wu, fagile online, wa sendo, wa sendi, linki ngakali saka Facebook, aksi bopela, ban tabala, eh, South Africa, abama friends, am, Facebook, kuna nabanga amazu, ramanyi, abashala ramanyi amazu. So, what depends, man, abeba bonade, download music, ama royalties, as of here, ane mina, is local artist, eh, debu wutu, epoki loktena, eh, protection, eh, creativity, kuneze, wutu menanjengi, kungikamile, nuntan tutsile, eh, ngenzi vitu, la, la, elokshini, debu sibayta sivitu, ami by post, wutu, ngabona, wu, vitu, wutu, v, celebrate, nta, nta, so, ami bata ntsa, o, nakuta, miwenga, ukaale, lukshini, amso la, ngalutso ka, ngabona, ngetsu.
Sibawa nga miski Malakwane, number seven. Number seven is here, on Franch.
Sambona ani. Eh, wu, duniso, wakana sugu, eh, owa zwa, ngatutunde, pasimbi, utso adisa lo, ngatini. Almena ma, amba, ngitinga, bu yatali.
Ma, 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 benzi, nama competition, makaswe kantua, la, nesu, 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 nesu. Sibawa nga dunis, sambala nungaba eight.
Eh, sambona. Ikamalami, ngopektemba, wa ngobani, ekofaunda, etu mbemba, musi, awazi. Eh, nzo kala ngobonge, ngopaneli, oke, wutu sense, eh, wuxiwa, nufana na, luma, nesu tina wakona etu. Nese, nibuza, wutu, eh, wushtawa, misu, luma, ngubuze, misu, sata ngenje, ngopektemba, wa ngobani. Debukela la, gumnyango, luma, wushamte, ju, wutu, mchappe, o, ngastomi, wa, awazi, in culture, lakungazi, gopu, wunza, raso, neta, wutu. Beku, yagi, ni, nuslan, eh, le, ama stukuda, safana, no, puktu, ome, abaga sampe, nabani, eh, la, 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 bama copyright, kozasina, ama artisti, lakungaza, sese, ulende, ntesa, bazoakulu, sa, sa, opti na, lo, wutu, si, register, ama artisti, ama ni, ala, ojo, tsho ngutu sixty percent, mmo, seventy percent, awa, register, nengasampe. No, smoba, o, ngachanda, gregista, o, achanda, wutu, nginga, awazu, luma, sini, keli, wutu, tuzo, nza, nshana, ngana, awa, o, ma, kala, o, o, afu, sava, tukutu, kuluwa, pre register, eh, kozosu, nayazo, wazu, uba, ni, nama reality, sava, o, toba. St, unduzo, wa, wutu, ishamte, ju, ngastwa, si, wutu, sise, klan, eh, mchappe, nshalo, wu, nyanga, ngenze, eh, wuxiwa, wutu, alfana, na, luma, wu, twa, wu, be, kuna, la, ama stukuda, sna, awa, aso, wazu, wutu, eh, ale, le, le, luma, ama artisti, asse, sulu lende, mchappe, tui, we five, no, eh, napu, baku, sing, koso, de, wu, sara, Andrew, eh, kapa, so, eh, kancha, robanjali, nabani, o, longi, artisti, nare, register, eh, alfi yoko, ndo, register, nshali, wu, nyaga, mchappe, makuna, wu, sense, tudi, nesu, 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 kancha, nikabang, wutu, sese, sisa ra, da, kuku, saba.
Sibawa nga patsamba, itali o, number nine.
Sambona. Number nine.
Sibawa nga number nine, very good, number ten. Somete sambona ani, ikamalama, ngobanda, la, umso, akuna la, etu mbembe, eh, ngukandengi bengazi, umso, ntry ndamatu. So, mena, ndela, ukuza la, ukuzi, ngenge, yimchappe, eh, ngenze, wutu, makbe, ama competition for ama poetry, gugu, ne, tim, eh, bewa, ndio, klapé, maxaklo, gugu, competition, tia, ingo tande, wuto, ukuluma, wutu, usukmeze, kilo tande, ngenge, si, expect, eh, poetry, eh, no, twenty five years, ne, no, sixteen years, wutu, iso, balango, mikondo, fana. So, ama, ama, artisti, eh, apana, ama poet, ayabulale, ngangala, o, koba, ibese, gibalabu sanguazu, wutu, ngi, ngakumpisa, nontemta, lakna, o, via, sumko, de, etu, alingan. Ogo, sili, since, umuzi, ku, dominate, amna, ngopali, ntsanu, pala, in, kondo, ntsanu, pala, in, amanove, nama, short story, ndal, kota, loco, go, lele, mo, eh, ba, angwazu, nyango, eh, melengong, ngotse, angwazu, mase, ngopalile, ngia, go, eh, lungse, danglung sakona, eh, oni, sela, eh, eh, pete, kona, so, ben, kulu, kusa, la, puti, mo, kumnyango, eh, lungen, ay, eh, 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 casting agency, wutu, we, zwa, neng, ah, oh, because, niyasi, shundisa, kuna mange, ngama contracti, nemitsi, eh, so, yonkele, ondo le, and then, mntibana, niyasi, mntibana, na, new casting agency, or, eh, recording company, or stable, in the, abazu, yengala, bandula, wa, ngoba, ba, fumi, wu, jamajani, bazunge, abangu, lisiga, she, ndaba, za, ma contract, bazunge, nchara, ngama performance, banchara, wutu, yes, turo, on, yo, pala, and yo, kawimsebenzi, ban, ban, ba, 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 fi, do, mokolo, wa, me, eh, fe, go, zwa, nengala, boba, ndu, wutu, ma recording company, ma casting agency, mufani, o, kunde, sela, ama artisti, estino, watch, fale, umsebenzi, wa, fale, ipreja, mbak, itinga, limelight, eh, fe, eh, kenele, wutu, tene, sene, ekonprati, angayazo, wutu, ishutu, tine, utso la, amanja, wakisewa, hini, nje, ngama artisti, tamani, ngisi, yezwa, eh, eh, ma, redweni, utso le, wuto, wutu, utso la, after, wutu, ikonkata, senele, inileza, stable, ama, right, swake, wonke, yena, utre, nese, tula, ama, saint, party, umsebenzi, wakua, wenzama, million, since, wile, leo, nte, ndaba, sese Dubai, since, wile, leo, ndoba, ma, ngima, artisti, tamani, nyabo. So, go, zwa, nengala, oma, company, why, can't, kude, muntse, twa, o, prega, na, na, wutu, bafeti, ye, yen, nte, de, because, mange, nengala, shundisa, pati, bo, na, obvious, bachez, ede, bafumi, ukuja, amanja, wama, artisti, ene, wutu, wutu, sese, benze, bata, utkuli, next, umsebenzi, wakuya, sini, sada, pangapani, wene, tene, ne, au, na, next, ben, tali, da, kona, la, project, nes, six, nyabong. Sibawa nga tati, number twelve.
I'm going there. Sambona. Eh, nimfisha, nimfisha, nimboni, ashinunki. Eh, nzo, tando, bo, ngithova, es, tange, tholi, eh, kula, nshana, ndo, ana, nshana, je, sina, o, nabapati, ngbo, ngifutu, wutu, mafigen, sizo, ulende, ndukuse, swazu, wutu, sizo, a, lise, izi, de, ezu, naspete, la, she, loma, sfunu, wutu, si, eh, tegloku, abasewe, ze, na, kuzo, nklile, eh, mama, ngenga, suku, ma, kunemi, mja, bumbuze, ngazwa, nganu, mbesi, buzwi, in. Oh, oh, ikamala, mngunuwa, azwa, soli, nswakuma, spala, waga, nungom. Oh, kala, ben, tala, ukuza, ngama, rights, abakuli, benda, au, nama, mchambe, umteto, otu, man, abego, nomtendu. Yee, imapa, ma, rights, one, na, abana, au.
Deferi, ukuze, lenganya.
Nsa kwele, nsa kwele, na, ma, mchambo, zo, ukuwa, kushutu.
Eh, nyagwe, bantukuluma, agadu, sina, skuluma, ngipili, bel, eh, alu, mi, ngipili, skuluma, ay. Kotwa, ama, lokal, sse, kuli, nyu, eh, awazu, kuli, nyu, agabi, eh, na, au.
Nsa kwele, wutu, mube, ngentela, yam, ntsa kwele, wutu, nsa, kwele, mi, nangi, artisti lendaw, shenzoni, yezu, three thousand, yee, pi, rights, shumku, ndu, nde, ka, o, amele, abena, ukuze, kuzi, na, umku, la, ngent, ukuze, nayatwa, lima, le, linga, na, nayalo, kuzi, na, iwakale, party, wa, tene, apesu, wa, tene, tula, lima, yee, pi, rights, anna, yu, ene, ngamni, yu, wutu, awazu, wutu, ngengwazu, tata, o, three thousand, name, hundred thousand. Omu ye, ukuzo, wutu, eh, yee, pi, zele, ngentza, ngay, wutu, nila, za, ama workshop, nila, ndebona, bato, libase, zunuli, ndi, fonge, tuse, ngelonge, man, umtibela, zunuli, mchambe, if, nbona, ma, posti. Uso, zanla. Angshali, eh, ndau, nifundise, na, baba, basta, fufu, wutu, yee, zele, bengenza, ngati, bat, pumi, na, bwa, be, kona, kuyo, yonki, mtembi, kuna, be, artiste, lo, eh, rotate, tayla, zwa, yu, basi, wena, bonge, koba, besa, kulant. Omu ye, ukuze, la, oso, ngondo, kanya, mchambe, nabata, bapali, ngwad, kuzi, ska, sene, ngima, baba, ngumtembi, ne, intengeni, bony, uprovoto, wakulu, wu, music, yee, pi, zele, ngentza, ngay, wutu, agadu, sini, nomtendu, wu, be, kona, nabatabali, ngsa, yu, ukuze, na, bazi, wuto, ashi, script, sa, ke, kufu, wuto, ngondo, na, ashin, kondo, kuzi, sino, ma, o, ma, skandi, festival, nanani, kota, agadu, ngizu, shwag, nomtendu, je, o, male, umteto, etego, o, shin, kondo, o, be, no, song, kondo, kpe, la, kobe, kona, crafters, o, umteto, display, ange, lapo, umteto, mama, o, zupshalo.
Debukela, yu, two minutes, wa, debukela, yu, o, ezi, la, zon, ikubeni, wena.
Nsa kwele, nsa kwele, wutu.
Debukela, yu, two minutes. I was trying to protect you, man, ngichel, wutu, lokoshos, eh, buzwa, insi, to, kula, ma, ah, sente, iskatsako, nganya.
Sibawa, mama, report, you know, o, ah, o, 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 crafters.
Ah, yengwa, zwa, ndu, mba, tshingi, mi, yezu, ukti, ne, yengwa, zwa, nganya. I, I was trying to protect you, wutu, ena, se, she, wa, eh, na, guketela, gaketela, washes, just, se, kuli, ngasoso, o, ke. Okay, it's time, eh, itali, o, number ten, palapans, nganya. Eh, sambona. Eh, no, kulu, mayo. Mbe, laslalela, mchambe, kona, so, iskatsi, no, kulu, mayo, o, o, mesis, nene, nama, baba, ngatuko, opo, ma, tande, otkanda, wu, church, man, Hilla's organization, eh, o, male, is into, sonke, mwe, ndo, zonke, is, eh, kundene, nindabu. Eh, nikoni, sela, mfigele, it, noko, kota, aga, se, wa, me, wukboga, in, pa, lo, pa, le, wutu, le, le, tshle, cha, eh, se, giti, namshangi, kundene, mbo, nan. Opu, wutu, ge, o, nlingwa, ma, tukose, ba, kulu, mele, na, tshisna, sang, o, me, tulare, eh, ham, sini, ulu, yar, o, kota, renina, le, concern, eh, two. Una, le, ndoma, kuliwa, wutu, wenzan, lo, economic development, na. Si, funa, pala, ngoba, utu, ya, tutu, ge, sa, we, ya, developer, abantu, wutu, batitu, re, eh, dweni, abasenza, within, eh, in Palatine, eh, kota, sata, tolo, wutu, tinasiba, nen, number, eh, sese, ngabe, la, pi. Si, ngaba, kandi, bama, kamba, tile, nene, in, tri, po, joban, kes, eh, le, nshela, pu, ekandwe, eh, arts, kota, sasa, sese, ashin, twa, tima, asu, la, boba, ndu, abasenza, o, o, ma, siku, mele, na, be, ma, teleni, kola, mayo, wutu, debu, na, zwo, kumela, sense, e, janu, kuzi, na, tshisbe, eh, yu, xomula, si, tinasiba, ya, tutu, wu, star. Wunna, me, ti, eh, tu, eh, si, jala, o, mchambe, ngikuluma, ngwazulu, natal, may, jala, le, me, ti, ukuwa, wutu, esu, seti, na, patia, export, wa, le, me, ti, eh, peshaya, eh, dise, esini, za, o, alu, vera, esini, za, ngabo, bani, o, wa, we, me, tesa, sese, sese, saki, na, ngu, wamfe, luna, ngu, wampi, luna, sela, instance, tapisa, eh, bashonisha, wutu, bugela, no, onke, o, 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 umteto, jalin, du, maya, ke, in Palatine. Mchambe, debu, yam, jena, amenji, kona, ngala, muzun, for it, mchambe, nzo, tmasen, bu, shala, zudu, in movie, ay, eh, 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 filmi, ay, whatever, they call it, I don't know. I was invited, wutu, yeh, Cape Town, yo, fundi, sa, o, eti, sa, wutu, oma, eti, sa, nesu, wu, in swanjan, because, you know, where to sit, I, we, must, swing. So, man, fi, alapa, bata, fana, ngokel, eh, alfa, kokel, nang, ente, de, right, I have to pay, out of my pocket, if me, agency, eh, zo, kulu, man, o, was, damn, o, zo, bwa, the wrong way, ngoba, bana, bebe, ngas, eti, swaranjan, and, o, ingo, shala, baba, bebe, eti, sene, esu, lungwe, move, nan, lo, man, an, longa, nen, e, bana, bebe, eti, sa, in ngi, sa, yeme, ngamba, krom, ah, tukat, ngani, weli, ma, sata, eh, wutu, bashonisha, arale, bugela, pa, na, senda, bu, eh, ngati, na, kona, ga, sala, ngoba, istindo, sini, manaje, ngoba, mchambo, wunye, bugela, pa, ntsu, mchamba, asundanga, mchamba, asas, wutu, kota, si, be, si, ti, ne, seng, wutu, kile, si, je, namajo, o, umtoto, funukwela, espi, na, baba, fe, tu, ama, artisti, no, kwa, na, wa, ba, kulu, man, eh, fin, de, espi, la, ngalo, within, ipilo, eh, last take on. So, nyafisa, wutu, mchambe, ben, man, eh, purpose, alating, sibali, wutu, mchamba, la, wanzo, ama workshop, either, in different categories, we have, within, Zulu land, again, shonjalo, basila, within Zulu land, so that, na, artists, o, as, we, kato, kato, karais, wutu, aboba, ni, bangena, ngap, aboba, ni, bangena, ngap, aboba, bangena, ngap, because we also have, our own organization, where we organize ourselves, as an NGOs, or LPOs, but it's not about individuals, it's about groups, nyabong, ngakul, sibawa, ngakulu. Ngekela, o, uku, boza, angoba, kona, la, fazo, kulu, o, ukuza, we, shayam, tetu, namshangela, sizzle, ama, bills, out, eh, bill, ekulu, man, eh, performers, protection amendment, bill, uptrichiyela, wa, lo, umteshuana, eh, eh, law, OSB, eh, o, kulu, man, eh, copyright amendment, bill, upravendile, ba, mtsalu, wutu, iti, nile, mte, tu, yini, lena, eh, cha, eti, kona, o, o, zenzo, sile, lele, wutu, ipasi, so, nje, ngoba, kupalu, e, ngje, nama, rubekona, o, ti, le, o, gafa, wa, yu, siya, tali, wutu, nina, kuu, migakulu, kulu, kesi, zeng, ah, koo, si, ngati, to, wutu, kuzi, economic development, economic development, o, zeng, ah, ba, wu, line, function, department, o, uyona, eh, konde, nela, la, ma, eh, o, uyona, atritie, eh, life, siya, kela, nte, bantu, baget, na, yigakulu, eti, ni, guna, loku, esu. Yiga, kolo, eh, twi, ni, kunalo, es, zeng, ah, ko. Si, tu, azula, ma, workshop, si, akta, na, la, o, ba, ngadang, kutu, zu, le, 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 imparatu, eh. Kotu, ala, zin, zin, de, kumuma, nga, la, ma, Bills, ah, tinda. Ama, perform, eh, 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 u, u, vige, le, wa, ma, performance, ah, tinda. O, u, vige, le, wa, kwa, ba, pa, li, si, afi, su, uze, na, ni, si, ni, ge, ze, ni, pa, wa, lo. Detela, ge, unan, ba, fourteen.
Sanbona, eh, ikama, o, sakile, ngampu, o, se, ngikamra, wa, nongo. Eh, o, ni, nga, fa, tu, select, ti, la, ngan, sa, ti. Eh, enzo, gusho, es, ikte, la, si, atela, ba, fu, eh, jena, maji, ilve, la, SS, publication, ah, o, umutu, lo, is, is, shala, koe. Eh, beginners, fees, nan, estre, lo, su, uze. Oma, ha, be, performer, STG, eh, TNG, performer, STG, sa, se, ICC. O, tu, performer, eh, same time, se, kuno, tu, se, publish, eh, video, eh, video, eh, se, fa, le, YouTube. Uze, unan, ma, right, ala, video, eh, same time, mina, nga, ge, stage. Eh, es, ye, se, sin, des, pis, o, na, suti, ku nga, ba, kona, in, le, uze, eh, mbi, nyonge, le, su, si, ha. Ku nga, ba, kona, um, kom, otu, YouTube, o, kuno, se, si, sa, ingoma, kasaki, o, ga, katuksebelese. Nomama, bu, se, bensa, nga, yee, pi, zele, yee, right, ya, ke, I, be, koe. Oma, live, performance, se, shayek. Eh, besa, uze, always, be, eh, cine, part, o, item, kasha, way, to, national, provincial, we, cast, eh, day. Yama, artist, part, two, equal, eh, per, ngo, soup. O, item, culture, ayen, zoma, minimum, which, but, arazano, na, azwa, bu, uze. Performer, perform, eh, ibe, na, eh, eh, eti, ekristi, ke, bense, eh, eh, estime, she, eti. Local municipality, o, ndere, kutu, koke, la, ngagi, artist. National, o, ndere, kutu, koke, la, ngagi, artist. O, item, kacha, o, o, ma, ma, kwa, la, kunalo, o, someli, dra, cha, ilazi, dra, cha, le, eh, kunazis, pova, pa, la. Zingamla, ba, artist, pa, la. Example, o, nsatshes, kasi, sa, nsatshes, kasi, sa, sen, ziwa, sakamwa, pensu, gui, province, sa, za, gui, district. Asuwa, nga, pa, zui, gui, 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 lokal, sa, za, ra, ngan, jala, ngan, jala, Los Angeles, sa, u, si, ga, pensu. Oma, nila, ba, be, mele, du, nongo, oba, na, ba, be, mele, du, du, ba, be, ketwe, la, ngan, jana, ni, tonga, yes. O, o, enda, pa, gui, invitation, na, mshange, ngitoni, zo, o, mina, eh, office, la, eh, eh, kotu, le, si, dra, cha, za, itoni, invitation. Ne, one, tinas, so, itola, ses, kala, ni, sa, se, unzi, ma, ses, kati, si, si, miza, ma, artist. Ikina, ya, o, ta, le, in, mess, ngie, zana, nabataba, right, ama, invitation, na, wa, we, le, nabataba, right. Artist of you, dra, cha, ifa, na, no, si, sa, si, kala, pa, zio, keta, gui, lokal, siabong.
Siabong, gande, zela, unan, ba, fifteen. Unan, ba, fifteen, we, ena, lo, yes.
Eh, as, bingalele, eh, no, skogo, si, akisha, pa, mba, ba, ta, ana. Ni, koe, lu, bingalela, eh, penale, o, o, kela, pa, na, pa, mbe, le, eh, kongba, gui, legislation. Eh, ngibingalele, o, item, culture, ngibingalele, eh, kule, kona, za, ba, si, sa. Eh, ngomo, na, na, ma, kongba, kona. Eh, ngi, head, ah, department, iti, si, ni, kona, la, prison, land. So, umbuso, ame, mina, o, o, konda, ne, se, mshamba, o, konda, ne, se, la, kula, la, pa, ektribe, le, ni, gunteto, uze. Ni, zue, is, kulume, so, kala, bes, kuluma, pa, mbe. Eh, si, kuluma, gengenda, ba, uze, guno, montu, o, na, sa, wa, zuge, pe, o, gue, rekota, we, ni, na, o. Stalo, uze, ba, ketsu, peti, sound, das, lung, sa, le, eh, nsa, ba, ngutu, ma, wa, la, yes, pa, za, misa, la, kune, ma, peti, microphone. O, 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 lung, sa, ju, sound, das, sa, me, na, kuli, eh, kesa, pa, za, mis.
So listen to film commish from the best meeting. Eh, what's in there? The spending. Eh, the portfolio of this one is about Malini's lab. Nina, er, Zilo, who's already department and it's my figure, I was horrendous. If you're in London, I have been a better man to watch back on. Eh, that's a good thing. That's the end. We live with you. Say, Keta. The full group of seven is saying Roma, eh, some bigger who's on as a sound effect. And she, she'll arrange any in the room. It's the same, Roma, the cool sun. Who was the gift of this la pan out of it? It project, I'm a massive hand, this is a long hand, this a corner in a pool key. That's a new day like a week in which I'm showing you. You got to look at who's who are going to learn. Man, I bought you my my mia, I was in hand book and sad boy. He pin the movie for the movie to work. So I go, yeah, boom.
Yeah, but I'm happy alone. Get out of the seventeen. That's a now.
I'm gonna come along and I'm gonna be a person. I thought in the way that somebody was in a challenge. Eh, we don't know. We thought we should be funny. So we are no over my artiste. Eh, as the corner, I'm trying to come in the way I feel bad. Now we're too bad, we are near, eh. Now we're too bad, we are near, eh. Viva artiste, viva. Viva artiste, viva. I'm my artiste, I'm there. I'm really my artiste, I'm there. Eh, the show's very many, many, very one. Oh, oh, damn. Eh, Boni Bami. Namshange, I'm gonna be in the way I feel bad. Eh, I'm telling them, they know much about. Eh, what do I get? Best player, who am I who can? So I can present a she. That's in the eleventh vanity. Now, if present a she near set, um, but I could, that's a basic order. And you see, yes, only best player, who can that you? Best player, who can I'm trying to young, I'm trying to he attend and then it roll in. I'm not in a battle. I buy me telephoning alone the bills. Stand where you're in the open bench, I'm in the local. I'm in the more what he on him, so what's for you to come out? It's a matter of money. And then when you in there, eh, I call cover the family. I'm not here, but I got a family. We are not for the cafe. Eh, oh, my, I bet me, couldn't manage to let me come in my eye. Oh, my, it could be, I'm trying to drop down. It's a girl. I'm sorry, I'm not sure. Eh, come on, let's go. No, but we are so good. It's a man, he has so good, is the the more what he is. It's a man, he has so good, the more what he, oh, my second, they look at. I got to hold on my finger, I'm sure I'm prepared. By a finger. What do I have to say? Oh, gee. Could I say that? Who I think that I call you to come in my, that I like that, that, that I'm being so. The root is for them to go, just then to go, just then to go. Oh, grand, you're not, oh, you're very good. Now, I'm going in for my artiste. Oh, to the family. But I, I, I am going to hang on, man. Oh, oh. You tell her, oh, number eighteen. I need to pass the number that they face who is eighteen. I'm not, man, I'm not so silly, was that, so what can I get? I'm going to tell you, I'm not good. Samunani. Samunani. Yeah, Pina. I come along, I'm going to trust come through the state name, someone is missing us, and cause I'm a quality. It ain't going to release a light to him, but we should have voted on my way into our to meet in the saloon. So I'm gonna be on the floor, I can relate to him, but it's no good. But I'm sure cash about about to love an egg, but come on, I'm a mass. So I'm a corner to him, but I'm not going to cash out, who's a cash away into our. Could be, who never had a lot of them, but they never had a P, eh, this is a girl who I'm a cancer for. That's why I'm going to make a cancer la, eh, to him, but won't get me to no, my account as well. I mean, can cast a shoe can cast a latine, eh, eh, as you can cast it, I'm too low, I am a parent. So, yeah, I put best player, who been in jail, I will go to corner, who can you, eh, eh, I'm a cancer. Which is corner, who to see cash in, eh, eh, this is a corner. So, let me add, I was your best cash on, this thing may be some who's on, who's great, the man, right? Thousand met try as a parrot, eh, eh, so, can I my artiste, yeah, I can ask for, for, so who's a corner up, I'm a and get it to the right. Yeah, boom. Best player, I put a class and he in, but still you find a nice in code. Who can you jump, I'm sparring to him, eh, come who to extract. Who can I jump, I'm jumping, best of the sugar. Who can I event? So, I'm jumping, eh, my less, we follow my sparring. Who can I bother, so we know? They call who to be class, you are the man, they in the way to the right, who's a government. So, I'm very low, I'm a parent. Best player, I love.
So, I'm a girl, but that they wait to before to ban the bomb. Eh, give me bone, oh, yeah. Is it like a music, me too? Oh, but I'm bang, if I manage. Yeah, bang. So, I'm a girl, your contributions to the bill. Eh, eh, we in both one, opening as soon as you can, so pendulum, I'm always telling my contributions with this. You know, I call it a present. So, tell her, oh, my corner, bang, I told her, eh, the bill. Maybe we can fly upon the niggas, eh, 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 eh. But I'm saying, eh, too, but who see, eh, 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 see, I need to say you know, I can, oh, my, eh, see, nearly say, eh, I must nearly say, eh, oh, true, no roof, who might school me see. She did it to them, I'm going to say, you can go, eh, 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 eh. Eh, come on, eh, perform eh, performance protection can you in the copyright? You're eh, eh. What do I, oh, but we're too long, eh, 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 eh. But I'm going to buy the gang, eh, 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 eh. Do you know who am I to tell us, I'm about to announce, who I'm doing, eh, 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 eh. Eh, understand the eh, to eat eh, eh, si, me, eh, I'm a set eh, eh. No, but I'm a set eh, 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 eh. I'm a band, I till eh, oh, finally, I 'm move, eh, 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 eh. You know, I call me, eh, eh, I'm a copy eh, eh, eh. Oh, finally, so eh, 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 eh. Oh, but yeah, I'm going to look. Oh, yes, really. Eh, so eh, 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 eh. No, but I'm in, I'm going to bar eh, 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 eh. Oh, put the room you really, eh, 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 eh. I'm going to register eh, 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 eh. Where's the window? Back on eh, 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 eh. I'm a ti, eh, eh, I'm a who register eh, 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 eh. I'm a contract. Back on eh, 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 eh. But I guess now, oh, corner, my my just eh, eh, eh. It's on the two eh, eh, eh. I'm a contract. Who's in eh, eh, exploit eh. Yes, I'm a no, 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 please. So, eh, 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 exploitation by eh, eh, eh. I'm going to explore eh, 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 eh. Now, I'm a upcoming artiste. I come eh, 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 eh. Yeah, I tell them, she so cocky eh. That's a me, eh, 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 eh. That's a exploitation. Okay, okay, I'm very strong. Who eh, 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 eh. I'm a eh, 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 eh. I'm a eh, eh, eh. I'm eh, 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 eh. I'm going to call eh, eh, eh. That's why it eh, eh, information is power. Man, eh, who buy the eh, 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 eh. Yeah, mobile, eh, 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 eh. Oh, my, yes. It eh, 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 it eh, 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 eh. No, eh, 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 eh. What do I call eh, eh, eh? Upcoming artiste call eh, eh, eh. Um, 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 also eh, 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 eh. Okay, eh, 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 eh. Good eh, 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 eh. That eh, eh, eh. Now, eh, 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 eh. You eh, eh, eh. Oh, finally, no more than twenty seven, oh, eh,[605.60]